No, you're talking about the other one, the second one. Remember, there's still, there's a. So James, come on, where do you go?
Welcome, everyone. This is the Bloomington School Board meeting Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, 7:00 PM. All members are present except for Director Sorem, so please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. We're, I need a motion for the resolution.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent Schools District 271 approve the attached proclamation proclaiming November 2nd through 16th, 2018, as American Education Week in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Segah.
So I'm gonna read the proclamation here. It says, "American Education Week, November 12th through 16th, 2018. Whereas throughout American history, schools have helped democratize our nations, strengthen our communities, and widen opportunities for all people; and whereas, by integrating different groups through commonly shared values, schools prepare this nation's diverse population to live harmoniously in a democratic society; and whereas, for generations, our schools have answered the call to develop and challenge the future leaders of our families, our communities, and our nation; and whereas, there is no greater legacy than the sound education of our children and education of our adults. Now therefore, we, members of the Bloomington School Board, proclaim in the Bloomington Public Schools that November 12th to 16th, 2018 be observed as American Education Week." So all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And we have Dr. Melvi here to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Steigov, Superintendent Fujitaki. Members of the board, just a quick couple words about American Education Week. The first observance of American Education Week occurred December 4th through the 10th, 1921, with the National Education Association and American Legion as the cosponsors. The conventions of both organizations put solutions to support and raise public awareness and the importance of it. Later, the US, what was then called the US Office of Education, joined the effort as a cosponsor, and the PTA followed in 1938. Today, there's a number of cosponsors, including the US Department of Education, National PTA, American Legion, American Legion, School Boards Association, National School Boards Association. It's a long list, along with, well, many professional organizations. I just want to say thanks for having the recognition for schools today. It's important to shine a light on the great work happening in our public schools here in Bloomington, in the state of Minnesota, and around the country. And I want to take time, real quick, to recognize, during this National Education Week, and thank all of our teachers, other staff folks in the school, our parents, our students, our community, there who work together with us to make the Bloomington Public Schools such a great place to be. So, thank you for that, and thank you Chair Steigov and School Board.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to have Jason Anderson come up for the Jefferson High School National Merit semifinalists and commended students. He's the, or the principal, I almost called you the superintendent, wouldn't that be? He's the principal at Jefferson.
Someday, superintendent, someday. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, distinguished members of the School Board and District Administration. Thank you for allowing me time this evening. The school, students, and their families are highly appreciative of this opportunity. My name is Jason Anderson, and I am proud to serve as principal of Jefferson High School, and it's one of the great honors and privileges of this position to be here tonight to recognize our great students and the amazing things that they accomplished. National Merit Scholarship Corporation is the most well-known name in academic excellence, and achievements in its award are sought by students across the country. Today, I present to you 14 of the best and brightest Jefferson High and Bloomington Public Schools students has to offer. These students will undoubtedly go on to achieve even greater acclaim. So I know many of our students have other obligations, couldn't be here with us this evening, so those who are here, as I call your name. So at this time, I invite the following nine students to come up and join me at the podium. Students, as you come up, please introduce yourself to the board and remain near this podium. So please come on up if you are here. Joshua French, Alexandria Janey, Kaya Johnson, Isabella Mathias, Ryan Meany, Claire Miller, Logan Redding, William Titus, and Genevieve Zimmerman. So introduce yourself real quick.
Hi, my name is Josh French.
Good job. Thank you.
Kaya Johnson?
I'm Claire Miller.
All right, stay up here, yes. These National Merit Scholarship commended students placed among the top 5% of all high school students in the country who underwent this rigorous testing process. Jefferson High School is proud to announce these nine students as earning National Merit commended status. Congratulations.
Do we have the other ones, the semi-final?
Yeah, we do, okay.
There's more? We got more? We got more, all right.
I have five other students, hopefully some could be with us tonight, that I would like to present as well this evening. Would these students, please, join me at the podium, and again, introduce yourselves as you step up. Charles Mackey, Ryan Martz, Amelia Miller, Isabella Fawn, and Emily Warmer.
Hello, I'm Charles Mackey.
Hi, I'm Emily Warmer.
All right, so these five students are among the top 1% of all high school students in the country. These National Merit Scholarship semifinalists are continuing their pursuit of the National Merit Scholarship finalists and ultimately scholar award winners. They will continue to compete for these distinctions and scholarships. Good luck on your next steps, and congratulations on your successes thus far. Bloomington Jefferson High School is extremely proud of all of these students, and we are thankful to them for their hard work and dedication, and to all their families for their dedicated support. Thank you.
Okay, I know we have some students here for government classes. My teacher is a student, so I have a statement to read. And then, I'm finished, you're gonna come to the podium and give your name, and your teacher, and your school, okay? So a requirement of our government classes is to observe a government. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, etc. The social studies curriculum guide identifies one of which is to understand the role and influence political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion information. So I'll invite you up to come up now to their name, your school, and your teacher.
I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm DeBeekler. My teacher is Mr. Storlein.
Jenna Clemmons, and I go to Jefferson, and I also have Mr. Storlein.
My name is Ava Obada, and I go to Jefferson, and I'm from Mr. Storlein's class.
Hi, I'm John Reichel, I go to Jefferson, and I'm also in Storlein's class.
I'm Ben Werner, I go to Jefferson, and I'm also in Mr. Storlein's class.
All right, thank you. So you guys, either one hour, or if we're done before then, you can get your agendas signed. There's agendas a lot on the back there, and the people along this side of the wall over here will sign the agendas at one hour, okay? Thank you. Is there anyone, wish us to address the School Board on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, we can move on to, is there a motion? All in favor of approving Part A of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, moving on to Part B. Transportation and Rod, is he over here? You want to introduce?
Chair Steigov, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members, thank you for having us here tonight. Report on the state of transportation, giving the board and the public a update of where we are. Also asking the, both the board and the public, for help in the situation that we're at right now with the, both nationally, locally, and within Minnesota, and within our district of a shortage of drivers. Bus drivers are an integral part at the end of the day. We are so lucky to have the drivers that we have in our department today, and we have one of those great ones with us tonight. And what we'll provide you tonight is kind of an overview of what we're looking for. We're kind of giving you an overall thing. I'd like to introduce who we have here tonight. Tammy O'Fallon Bidmar, who's a bus driver. Kate Martin with the Community Relations, and Tim Reebok, which is the head of operations. So I'll turn it over to the three of them. Presentation.
Sweet. Thank you for your time this evening. Some of the things in transportation, we have a lot of positives. Under, Bloomington Public Schools has a lot of newer buses. We typically replace eight or so buses per year to keep our fleet new, so we do have newer buses. We have high-quality video cameras, and we have just entered the age of 4K video cameras on buses, and our newest systems actually are quite remarkable in regards to what they can capture. Starting in February, we're due to get installed GPS-guided routes, so our routes will actually, much like your, or your phone, are, who may not be familiar with routes. I drive a combination of 1080 and 4K stop-arm cameras, small in the interest of safety of students. We also have a driver shortage, much like Rod had mentioned in regards to not only a state issue and a national issue. We have a lot of great drivers. I would say we have the best drivers I've worked with, that those drivers are comprised of majority are retirees and/or community members. Shortage metro, state, and county, but currently Bloomington is two routes short, and we have 10 contracted routes, so for a total of 12 routes short currently. How do we fill those routes when we're short? We do have standbys, mechanics, and office staff that drive as needed. So standby pool is typically 10, and from there, we move into office staff and mechanics. We're here tonight, as Rod had stated, to help have you and everybody in Bloomington who sees this, to help us spread the word. Refer to friends, drivers, people you may know. One of the great things we have is we have an internal training that does an awesome job, but we also have Metro South doing adult basic ed. They will have a class that's planned to start this spring. They have a class that's going to be ending in December. We offer paid training, we've got great benefits, health insurance, dental insurance, paid time off. It's great for parents and grandparents, and one of the, there's a lot of great things, but a couple of the best things are, if you have a Bloomington Public Schools student, our calendar follows your student's calendar. So you will be home the same days that your child or children would be home. And lastly, we have the best students, hands down.
So our department has been working with transportation for several months on a recruiting slash marketing campaign, targeting different strategies and kind of brainstorming new ideas on how to reach out and tackle, solve this driver shortage. So we have a campaign in place, or a plan in place, and a campaign that we're building on, including some print ads, some social media, a feature in social, in the school page's community newsletter, and we will continue to work through this plan as we move forward. We're also working on a video with the City of Bloomington, a segment of Bloomington Today highlighting not only the need for drivers, but just the job itself and the community member aspect. Most of our drivers really enjoy that, that piece of it, that they get to work with kids and still be a part of kids, have kids in their, in their daily lives, especially if they're a retired district employee. And again, we are really appreciative to have one of our drivers here today to kind of give an in-person testimonial about the highlights of the position. So Tammy.
I love my job. I love getting to have the opportunity to be the first one to see them in the morning and the last one in the afternoon. I, for the most part, I know all the students on my bus by name. I go on my own time to the schools, introduce myself to the appropriate people, find out how to pronounce their names on my own list, and then greet them accordingly. And let me tell you, if you don't say their names right, they'll let you know. So you've got that backup as well. I have law and order on my bus, there's consequence. I treat these kids as if they were my own. So there's boundaries. I tell them we're all a family on the bus, and we're gonna respect each other, respect the bus, and respect me. And if they can't do that, then I pull the bus over, and I sit there. And you know what? It doesn't take long, and they themselves will get it together, because they all want to go home. In the morning, they're my angels, because they're all asleep. In the afternoon, something happens. They wake up. So it's a different scenario in the afternoon, and I have the best Olson Middle School kids on my bus. They help at the end of the route in the summer, or when it's warm enough to have windows. They just automatically shut windows that students leave open. They bring up other people's items if they're left on the bus. We really do work well together. My bus's name is Betty, short for Beatrice, and all the buses that I have driven, kids know that, so they talk about Betty as well. I keep going on, I don't know how much time we, but again, I love my job. I waited a long time since my son was two years old to be a bus driver. I used to count the buses as I went by them, because I worked off of Old Chocopee and Hampshire Boulevard, and I always wondered, where do all these buses come from? Well, now I know, they come from Olson and Jefferson, and now I don't count buses, I drive buses. I love it.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
Go ahead, Ben.
I mentioned earlier, we had Bloomington Student Advisory Council meeting with our middle school students, and they were talking about how much they appreciate us, and, you know, that, that they miss them when they're gone, and they appreciate them, that they care of them. It was just a conversation about it, and so I just really appreciate what you have in Tammy, in your students' lives, and I also appreciate the fact that, you know, we're seeking out those drivers that will impact our kids. I rode buses all my years in school, I had to take a shuttle between my apartment and the school, and, you know, it does make a difference, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to say, I would thank you for your service. I don't know if you mentioned how long you've been with us?
Um, I, this, I'm in my third year.
So when you, can I ask how you found out about being a bus company?
The bus company, that's how bad I wanted to do it. I didn't have to ask anyone, I just knew where it was and what I had to do. But I know that, you know, there's ads, there's things, that if I lost my job, or if I was gonna quit, the next job would be a school bus driver. And everyone that knows me, including Kate, knows that about me. So it's easy, it was easy.
That's cool. If you had to share your experiences with prospective bus drivers, how would you sort of reel them in? As Rod said, there's a shortage, and you could say that bus drivers could be choosy. What makes, in your opinion, what makes Bloomington the best? How do you get somebody to come in and say, hey, give it a try, come and talk to this guy, he'll give you an interview, or what is, what is your two-minute elevator speech sound like?
The streets are pretty easy. Unlike Minneapolis and St. Paul, where it could be a little chaotic for driving, I think the streets of Bloomington are pretty easy to come to know, east side and west side. Did, I was amazed at how many roads were worked on this. It was great, not necessarily for driving, but in the end, it's gonna really improve. So we've got some new streets, we've got the best kids, we've got new buses, that's a nice thing. Isn't, I think, 2012 or something like that, and off if you choose to, you get the holidays off. When the kids are off during Christmas, so am I, that's really nice. Thanksgiving's coming up, I have that time off too. What else could I say? I don't know, kids are our future. It's so, you know, they're moldable, they're sponges, we can mold them. I found, being in an office all my life, adults necessarily don't want to change, but I think kids don't have that in their mindset. They're always changing, classes are changing, what they're learning is changing, so I think that's an opportunity for people to really have an influence on kids, and they're our future. They, the kids that I drive the bus may, one day, one day be sitting in all of your seats, for all I know. They may be president of, of our country. I mean, there's lots of opportunity for them, and it's so great. As I say, I have the best office in the world. I have a corner office. It's got a huge window. It's got windows that open, at the water cooler, if you might say. The conversation is priceless. What kids say are just phenomenally funny, some of the little kids and the things that they say. My view is ever-changing. I see the sunrise, I see the sunset, I see all the weather that's out there. I have people come and I have people go. I have a great job.
I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I think we have our PSA. I mean, all we have to do is replay Tammy's comments, and we'll get hundreds of people coming.
I hope so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, well, first of all, I want to say thank you to Tammy for, for loving your job and for loving our kids. You have the heart of an educator, you care about the needs of our kids, and how important it is for a child to get on the bus and, you know, to see that first person in their day, that's gonna make a difference, you know, if it's, if it's a positive interaction by them in place, you know? It seems like you managed to keep it all organized inside the, inside the bus. So I have a question for you, Tammy. With all the talking that we've been hearing and having in the past weeks, in reference to safety, how, how do you feel about, when you're driving, how safe do you feel when you know that there are other cars that are coming? Do you ever have those doubts, that maybe those drivers are not gonna stop for your kids when they are crossing, when you are at a stop and your arm is out?
All of the above. That's my biggest concern, I share that with my kids. I, I like to communicate with those kids. There's times, especially with Olson kids, when I, when I pick up the last student, I pull the bus over and I make announcements, you know? I told them the other day, yesterday, I told all my students yesterday, the weather's gonna be cold today, so dress for the weather. Do they listen? Not necessarily, but they were like, really? It's gonna be in the single digits? Thanks for telling me. You know, they're very appreciative of that communication. I'm an educator. I'm not a teacher, but I'm an educator. As far as traffic, yes, that's, that's our, I'd have to say that's my biggest fear, defensive driving, and we learn that through our training. My husband was a garbage collector, so he's got a CDL, and through all of my years with him, he has slowly but surely taught me defensive driving, and most people on the streets are not defensive drivers. You just have to always be on guard, always watching, anticipating, anticipating what the next driver's gonna do, and once you get kind of trained to that, you can almost call it out. You just know what's gonna happen, although they do surprise me still, but, and I teach those kids, you know, I, I've got a new activity route, and so I'm learning the kids, and I'm trying to tell them, after they've been in school for eight hours, if you're gonna cross, you go to the corner of my bus, you look at me, I look at you, okay? And let me look around, let me make sure, because I sit way higher than you, and I can see more. And when I give the okay, you can cross, and when you get to this corner, I want you to look as well, because more eyes on you is better, and then we get across. Or if, tonight, it was dark when I was dropping off some of these kids, so I'm teaching them, if you get off and you're going that way, get off right where the door is, go to the sidewalk, and then wherever you have to go, be gone, and then I don't have to worry about you. And I talk to them, just like that. My worst fear is that something should happen to you. If you fall, I can't see you, and I don't want to tell you what could happen. So I just, I communicate all that. I think the more we teach them, and the more they learn, and the more they know that I care, or we care, I think that's pertinent to, to the whole success.
Right. Now, I have a couple of questions for, for any of you. So in regards to training, can you tell us a little bit more about that training, what comes with that training?
Five, okay. Thank you. Your perspective at any point, jump in. We have a process where the drivers, there's three things that are required of a driver in the, what I would call the pre-phase, prior to, before they become a driver. They need to get, pass a permit test that is a Class B permit test, a passenger endorsement, and a school bus endorsement. When they pass
When they pass those, and that is what the ABE program helps them do, they come to our department. And the beauty of our department is, we cater to whatever the hours that the person is available to come. We have a training department that runs roughly from six in the morning till five in the afternoon. So when life happens and people need to be somewhere, we accommodate their schedule to them to train. No two drivers actually complete that in the exact same time, it's not permissive that way. We give them time, the time they need. Out of initial video coursework, to get them exposed to what driving a bus is, and then we start with the behind-the-wheel, and the time that it takes for the individual to actually feel comfortable taking the test. State of Minnesota, we currently take our tests mostly in Eagan, and we'll bring a bus down with you to take your test, and once you pass that test, you can sign up for a route, and away we go.
Okay. Does your training, besides all the technical part of it, does it include, like, human relations training as well, and, you know, what to do if there is a fight in the bus, or, you know, any kind of situation that you might encounter in the time when the kids are in the bus?
Yes, I'm very happy to say yes. The State of Minnesota Department of Public Safety is, this is a resource that's found on the website. This is where we'll direct the prospective drivers, and this is also the teaching material that the ABE program uses. In there, the mechanics of a bus, to relationships, to if you're interested in driving special ed, and what special ed is about. It's all contained in here, it's a great resource, about 53 pages.
Okay. And now, my last question is in relation to the partnership with the Bloomington Police Department. Are you, or do you already, how can I? When we have situations of safety, it's not only when the bus stops, and the arm's out, and the drivers are still driving, and some of them are driving fast, but we're also seeing situations in the corners of the schools, where there is even a stop sign, and then we have parents who are coming and dropping off their kids, and then taking off right away, really, really fast, and not even respecting the stop sign, but just straight, you know? I even have them in my street, coming out of Hillcrest, they just fly, you know, there's not even a stop. And so, do we, are we anticipating any type of campaign to also address this kind of situation, so that we can share this with our parents, kind of share reminders, and, yeah?
The campaign piece, we do join with the State of Minnesota in regards to when they have their, October is School Bus Safety Month, and we join and partner with them. Part of what they do is statistics on different violations, most notable would be stop-arm violations. We have a stop-arm program, we work with the Bloomington Police Department, we have some high-level technology that can actually capture license plates and people, and Bloomington PD then prosecutes those people. We also, when drivers are, have a large amount, say, old chock-a-piece in a particular corner, we've worked with Bloomington PD to bring in force multiple traffic enforcement officers at the time and the location that the bus drivers let us know about, and they'll do a quote-unquote sting in the interest of safety, largely due to stop-arm violations. And then our, we have a safety protocol with the drivers in regards to whether it's a safety concern on a bus, and that can be a safety concern where it is a parent who wants to board the bus, all the way to a medical concern, and we have a protocol of using dispatch and/or cellphone, a written protocol that gets 911-activated, gets the appropriate support as quickly as possible. And hats off to Bloomington PD and/or Life Safety Resources, they're very quick to respond.
Also, I'd like to add, is over the last, probably, I would guess, five years, I don't think there has been a site that we haven't touched in some way of safety, in the way of changing bus loops, separating parents from buses as much as possible. So, a lot of that, of how we learn those type of things, come from the drivers. What the drivers see, kind of exactly what you've said, Director Korman, is they're out there seeing everything on a day-to-day basis. And they come back and provide that information to the trainers, to administration, they, we then go out and look at the site, see what we can do, see what kind of changes we need to make. So, like I've mentioned, at least, I would say, 90% of our sites have been touched in the last five years.
Right, yeah. Really important to continue to remind people about safety, and how important it is to keep an eye on there for our kids, you know? And that includes parents and staff members, too. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have John Weiser, who's going to do the enrollment report for 2018.
Good evening, Chair Steiglaff, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members. I'm here tonight to present the 2018 enrollment report. I come every year to bring the same report. It struck me, as I was going, getting ready for tonight, that I haven't even changed the color scheme in the last five years, this was so consistent. There's one needed tonight. We like to bring this report to a public meeting, just to emphasize some of the important information that we track and follow in the district, and to, as a superintendent sometimes says, be good students of our enrollment. I'm going to, there's a lot of numbers here, I'm going to highlight a thing or two on each page. I sometimes recommend, when I go through this report with people, that if you're looking to compare year over year, it's nice to pull up last year, next to this year's, if you're looking from one year. And then there are some 10-year trends in here, which I'll talk about. Oh, and before I forget, thank you to Alyssa Miller, our MARS coordinator, who helps pull all of this together. All right, so I'll start with page three. This is a snapshot, it's nice to point out how data works sometimes, in regard to a snapshot of data versus continuing enrolled data versus end-of-year data. This is a snapshot we take on October 1st of every year. It means we look at all of the students who were actively enrolled on that day of school. Within just a few days, we have schools who go up by a couple of students and down by a couple of students, so it's important to keep that context, when you're looking at this report. Versus live hub data, or versus an MDE report, you might see some differences in the numbers there, and that often explains it, our snapshot versus their snapshot. The other thing to keep in mind here is that this is a K-12 report. It doesn't include our early childhood programming, which is robust, it doesn't include some of our adult ed programming. We've been consistent in keeping this K-12, along with other districts in this, and it gives us a good district-to-district comparison, kind of an apples-to-apples comparison. We value those programs, we just aren't talking about those here. So let me start with page four. Page four, I'll talk a little bit about our overall enrollment numbers, and then some of this data repeats by site, and you can follow from there. The top grid on page four shows a comparison of October 1 last year to October 1 this year. And the bottom of column three there, you see that we're a 10,098-student school district, K-12. That's 10,143 students last year. That means we went down by 45 students over the last year. The next column over is our projection. Rod Zifkovich and his team do these projections. It's what we plan our staffing and our budgets on. Sites depend on that in staffing season throughout the spring, so we included in this report. You can see the difference from projection in that second to the last column. So while we were down 45 students over our actual enrollment last year, we were actually up over our projected enrollment. That means we got a little, we got 49 extra students that we had intended, that we had budgeted for, that we had staffed for. That's a bit of good news. The next two tables there are a breakdown by elementary site, our 10 elementary schools, and then our five secondary schools. Same type of data, comparing last year's enrollment at each site to this year's enrollment, and then the comparison over projections. Just a little side note here, when you're talking about trying to predict data or project data out for 10,000 students, it's a complex formula, so if you look at those numbers, being off by 45 in a district of this size, or being off by 10 or 20 at a site, is actually pretty impressive from Rod and his team. On the next slide, we do a breakdown based on grade. Down in the lower right-hand corner there, you can see that total, again, 10,098 students in this district, K-12. Two high schools across the top, and then the other schools going down. Some people point to, in this, on this page, that we have a kindergarten class of 728 students, and we'll have a graduating class, at this point, of 810 students. On pages six, seven, and eight, we do a demographic breakdown. So I'll walk you through a little bit of this, and then we'll skip forward to some of the more graphical pages. That total column, if you look at that total column, you can see at the top is our K-12 enrollment, again, 10,098. We break that enrollment out by gender first, then by the five ethnicity codes, federal ethnicity codes. We're a 51% ethnically diverse district. Last year, if you were looking at last year's report, that number was 50%. We've been gradually moving up by a percent or so in ethnic diversity year over year. The next breakout there is that same 10,098 students broken out for EL or non-EL students, 14% EL, or English learners. That's up 1% over last year. The next breakout is around free and reduced lunch qualified, those students who qualify for free or reduced school lunches. We have 39% of our students who qualify for, in one of those categories. Slightly better data than last year, we were at 41% last year. We've hovered around that 40% free and reduced mark for about the last five years, so we've been stable in that area. Next is a breakdown of our special education versus regular education students. 14% of our students are receiving some sort of special education services. That number is stable, it's the same as it was last year, 14%, and it stays around that number year over year. And the bottom breakout is residents versus non-residents. These are students whose families choose to open and enroll into our district, so 837 students from other cities, other districts, come to us for our educational offerings. Anticipating the question about how many do we send away versus how many do we receive, we always come out on top in this category, usually by about 60 to 100 students. So while 837 students choose to come to us, about 750 or so of Bloomington residents open and enroll in other K-12 systems. I won't go over any detail on these next couple of slides. This is the elementary version of those same breakdowns. You might look at your assigned school and study more closely what the ethnic diversity is, what the free and reduced lunch status is of a particular school of your interest. On page eight is the same thing for our secondary schools. And then we try to put some of that information in a little better context for our visual learners. So on page nine, you'll see the combination of what we call a demographic index. Sometimes our programming and our funding and our resources and staffing are dedicated to identified need. Some of those areas of identified need are poverty, so free and reduced eligibility is a data point around that. Sometimes it's around English language learners, and sometimes it's around special education, identified education needs. If you combine the percentages from those prior pages for each of our sites, add those three numbers together, those three percentages, you get what we would call a demographic index. Typically, a school with a higher demographic index has a different staffing situation, different funding, different environment, different challenges as well. Here you can see the secondaries and the, or the high schools and the middle schools and the elementaries are sorted by, from lowest to highest. Those four elementary schools on the right, Oak Grove, Washburn, Indian Mounds, and Valley View are our four title elementary schools, for instance. Here is the biggest pie chart in the world, it's of our ethnic diversity. Again, we're at 51% ethnically diverse district. It's tracking with the changes in our demographics in our city, our residents are becoming more ethnically diverse as well. The growth area from last year to this year was in the Hispanic area, we gained a 1% gain in the Hispanic quadrant of this chart. The second half of the report is about 10-year trends, just in a couple of those areas. I'll just pause to say that when I get a question from some outside source, either a community member, somebody from a news organization, usually the answer to their question is somewhere in these reports, in this report. It's written in plain language, it's a, I think it's a very digestible report for somebody who isn't immersed in school numbers and school dynamics. And so if you two are out and about and get asked some questions about what a school is like, or what our district is like, I think this is a good place to point people. It answers nine out of 10 of those generic emails that I get. Page 12 shows 10-year overall enrollment history. You've seen from Mr. Zifkovich and team, his projections, his optimistic, and then conservative projections, typically they open up to the right. We have been hovering, we've been over that 10,000, that elusive 10,000-student mark in our entire history, or at least the history I've been here. And we tend toward the higher end of Rod's projections, which is a good thing, in terms of enrollment. The next couple of slides show ethnic diversity, 10-year breakouts, first as an aggregate. So you can see there's that 1% to 1.5% growth year over year, over the last 10 years. On slide 14 is ethnic diversity for each of our elementary schools. So it gets a little complicated, but I think the colors help. As a side note, while our total ethnic diversity is around 51%, you can see it's slightly higher at our elementaries. If you just take our elementary population, it's at 53%. And then it's slightly lower at middle school, and slightly lower at high school, indicating that there's, that ethnic diversity is going to continue, that average is going to continue to climb over the next couple of years, as those students move up through middle and high school. Slide 15 is the same, that same chart, in terms of middle school. 52% if you just look at our middle school population. Page 16 is the same ethnic diversity numbers for our two high schools, Jefferson and Kennedy. And then the last set of slides, 17 through the end of the document, is around free and reduced lunch eligibility. First, on an aggregate, 10 years of those free and reduced lunch qualifying. reduced lunch qualifying stats. Again, there you can see that over the last five years, or even, maybe even longer, maybe over eight years, we've been hovering right around that thirty-nine, forty, forty-one If you look at our elementary schools, school by school, you can see some fluctuation there. That can mean changing demographics within pockets of our city. It can also mean moving programs. As we move a special education program, for instance, there was a boundary change within this ten-year timeframe around two thousand and eleven, twelve. And so you might see some, some more jaggedness in the lines because of either a program move or a boundary move. The, the launch of a new program, for instance, can cause some of those fluctuations on a local level. The second to the last slide is the middle schools, same three, same data for the three middle schools. And then slide twenty is free and reduced lunch eligibility for our two high schools. After, oh, pardon me. After I present this to the board and I allow you to ask all your questions, and I cross my fingers that you don't find errors, I publish this report to our school website or our district website. The last many years of this report are also on the website, and so you can look up any number of, of those reports and, and print them and look at them if you'd like. So what kind of questions might you have for me?
Well, first of all, thanks for coming. I always appreciate your presentations. I'm just going to limit my questions to two. I'm sure there'll be more asked. I'm looking at slide four, district-wide actual versus projected, and it looks like we're down fifty-seven in the K-five numbers from last year. Just curious if the data helps us understand where those students went? Do we know, did they go to open and enroll? Did they, did they just pick up and leave and go to another city? Do we have any idea knowing where they went? And question, and I'll lump it together, is do we, do we have and would it be fair to include a state average? I mean, I know each, there's three hundred and thirty-six different school districts. We're all different, but occasionally it'd be kind of nice to, just to see where we stack up with a state average on, you know, some of the, some of the numbers.
Yeah. I can, I can look into the state average question. Let me make a note of that. In terms of fifty-seven students, being down fifty-seven students, we do watch for things that come up in the news. You know, we have, families have more opportunities now than they ever have in terms of educational choices. And so we monitor pretty closely when a new offering opens up. A new school is opening, a new school is opening up on our border, or a neighboring district is doing something. They're also trying to provide good services and attract students to their, to their programs. We don't, I don't know of anything personally of that, where those fifty-seven students are. It's likely they're coming a couple across all different schools, all different sites. The other thing to note is that there are general trends where we'll have a, a larger-than-average class of fifth graders graduate compared to the incoming kindergarteners. And so what I might do in this case is look at the fifth graders who left compared to the kindergarteners who came in, and, and I'm betting there's some discrepancy there that would explain some of that change.
It's just, it's interesting to know, and you know, when you see the, the lower grade, the K-five students, if there's a drop there, you know, that helps me understand sort of sustainability. We know that we're, if, if we have a third grader, we know we're going to have him for nine years, hopefully, because once they come here, they'll know that this is the best. But if we, if we don't have those, the, the young ones coming in, and maybe we have an influx in the high schools, we know at the most we're only going to have them for four years.
Yeah. I don't want to speak on Rod's behalf, but I know that I've heard him talk before about a couple of things that happened. There are crossover points where fifth to sixth grade, transition points where we typically gain more students because other programs stop providing services at the fifth to sixth grade mark, at the eighth to ninth grade mark. We do have tremendous stability in that we assume every second grader is going to become a third grader, and almost to a kid, that's true unless a family dynamic changes. So it's one of the more stable statistics. You're right. Once we, once a student attends our schools, they typically tend to stay with us.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, I think following upon Director Burks' question there, when we're looking at the, the high school, we're seeing kind of the opposite. We're seeing more, more kids than what we're projecting. We have like a different from projection of seventy-two. So I'm wondering, do we know why we're missing the mark on those high school students and where these mystery students are coming from?
I don't know, but I think what I can do is I can, I can summarize these, get together with Rod and, and give you a written response. Okay. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, definitely. It's just, it seems like the last couple of years, we've been having more high school students than we've expected, and it's kind of like, where are these mystery kids coming from? And I wonder if we can identify that and replicate that.
Right. Thanks.
Go ahead.
I had a similar question because I have a neighbor who keeps harping on me about, you know, well, how many open enrollment students do we have coming in? And so now I have the answer for her, which is great. But the question I have is, when we do have students that leave our district, do we know where they are going? Is there any way to track that? Because transcripts usually have to be sent to another school or to the parent. Is that a question we can ask the parent? Or is that something that we know just from the data of where that transcript is going?
We get better and better at tracking long-term where our students go who leave our system entirely. Most of that is done manually. If a student, if a family moves away and they stay within the state, we can sometimes get delayed data. If they show up in Alexandria, Minnesota, we can sometimes find out that they're there. Any student that lives in, within the boundaries is reported to the state in any number of categories, and we may not be able to look up on the day that they un-enroll from us, but within a certain period of time, we can find out whether they've enrolled in a non-public school, because non-public schools are required to report to MDE, or if they've chosen to homeschool, or if they're going to a charter, or any of those other options. So we do, we can take the total sum of students within our boundaries and know where every student is in one of those categories.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm interested in how many students actually become homeschoolers, because that's a really growing number that I'm finding. And there are schools that are started in different areas. I can confer with you about some of that information, because I have friends who have chosen to do that. And I'm hearing about these big programs that are co-ops that they get together with. I'm just wondering what we could do to try to win them back even.
We do track students who go to these various other categories, including homeschool. I can send a summary of that data to the board. My recollection is that the homeschool number plateaued and is, has stayed pretty stable over the last several years.
Okay.
Other, the other categories, like going to a non-public school has, and charter schools have fluctuated more. Homeschool, as I recall, has been pretty stable, but I'll, I'll summarize that data and send it to you.
That'd be great. Thank you so much. Appreciate you crunching numbers.
And in terms of retaining those students, I think it happens with good services. So drawing students back in, either through online learning opportunities, the ability to take an AP class that you can't take, that's more difficult to take at home, or, or social activities, being on a sports team, being in band. Those are the primary reasons we hear about homeschool students coming back into the system.
Good. Thank you so much.
Ms. Carmen.
Yeah. I'll just, thank you for this report. This is wonderful. I was just kind, kind of curious, would be curious to, to know more about the open enrollment part, you know, if, if possible, if we can, if we can know that information. I know it's sometimes it's, it's hard to know where everybody goes and when they go and, you know, who goes. But in the area of ethnic groups, you know, who are we losing to other school districts? I'd be curious to know, you know, if there's a difference in percentage depending of, of the group or, or not. And the other thing is, could you remind me, when it comes to open enrollment, you were, you were saying that we have seven hundred and something students that open enroll, and then that we lose about the same amount of students. Could you remind us, you know, what the limit is when it comes to open enrollment, students that we get from outside of the district? Is there a?
Tell me more about that. What do you mean by the limit?
Is there a limit of the number of, amount of students that we receive or that we are willing to receive from other school districts?
We accept every student who wants to come to Bloomington Public Schools, and we try to limit those who want to make other options. So I, is that the right answer?
It's a good answer.
That is the answer that we aim, that's the answer that we aim for. We feel like if we provide good services, if we're providing good education that's inclusive, that we'll keep and retain our students. Where we do see families making other choices, sometimes it's geographic, along the Richfield-Bloomington border is, is where we, we, we gain many Richfield students, just to be honest. And then, so geography, and then also work situations, anecdotally, work situations will draw students either into or out of a school district, because it's easy to take my son to work with me because I work in Bloomington and they have a program that I would like him to enroll in, or vice versa.
So with this unlimited number, do you ever get any feedback or concerns from administrators or staff members in regards to class size?
I'm looking over at Assistant Superintendent Melby. The question is, do we get concerns from administrators about class size if, if too many students open enroll in a school?
No. Not really. We have good class size.
We have good class size.
Yeah.
That's true. Thank you.
Most of our buildings are well within the capacity of, of enrollments. We can take enrollment in almost any of our buildings. Within certain grades, it gets a little, it can get up and down, but we always have room for students who want to come to us.
Right. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the policy review, revised policy six zero six point one, procedures for handling questioned materials and controversial issues. Would someone like to read it?
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves revised policy six oh six point one, procedure for handling questioned materials and controversial issues.
Second? Sir, sir. You're kidding me. Okay. We have Eric Melby and Rick Kaufman here to give us some information on this policy.
Sure, Madam Chair. Superintendent Pujutak, you members of the School Board, we're here tonight to seek board approval on a revision to policy six oh six point one, which was previously the procedure for handling questioned materials. We have spent several months in developing guidelines, originally guidelines, how to handle controversial issues as the, we continue to see a growing increase across the country in these areas. Through our work, we have developed, we developed guidelines, we vetted it with various different stakeholder groups, principals and other staff members, cabinet, and the, the board's policy committee. What you have before you is a policy that basically incorporates controversial issues into the, an already established procedure for individuals that have concerns or questions about controversial issues used in school, and the process for that to be reviewed by initially school staff, then the district staff, and ultimately would come to the board. Assistant Superintendent Melby and I are here to answer any questions you have with respect to this revised policy.
I add that, that I think there shouldn't be a lot of discussion, because I think that this has been pretty well-vetted between the policy committee and everyone else, so I'm not, I mean, unless there's questions, I'm not really expecting everybody seeing this. So the people in the public that don't know that, though, it's not that this is their first look at it. Everybody here's looked at it, put their comments in, and the policy committee has, has worked hard with the cabinet on it, so.
Yes. Well. Yeah, so last, the last meeting, I'd said that we'd had a policy meeting, policy committee meeting, and we talked about an hour and a half of policies, and this one we probably spent about a half hour on. So this is a, it's a pretty heavy policy, and we did a lot of discussion on it. And I think it's a, it's a good policy. I think it, the reason why I like it is that I think it systemizes the process so that each building isn't kind of handling this ad hoc and, you know, sort of different to different buildings. We have a nice policy for the whole district of the procedures to follow, which is something that is important. So that's really all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? All right. I guess we don't have any more questions. So in favor of approving this policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to board room reports. Who'd like to go first?
I'll go. So just briefly, last Friday, we, in Bloomington schools is when we did the flag raising ceremonies. It's a way that we honor our, those who serve every year, and it's one of my favorite events, and I'm glad I was able to attend it this year. And I made it to a couple of schools, and I think it's important that we do this, that we're showing our kids why it's important to, to honor our veterans and those who serve. So it was a nice cold and chilly morning, so I want to thank all those that came out and, and those from the armory from, that came up to raise the flags. So it was a great, great event. And then also yesterday, the student, what was it, Student Advisory Committee, the Board Student Advisory Committee met with the middle school students, and our topic was on safety. So I want to thank Rick Kaufman who was there. He kind of was our guest speaker and led our, our students in, in conversation. And we talked about safety at school and safety to and from school, and Rick kind of went over the safety upgrades that we made over the last couple of years and, and asked some questions. And what I love most about middle school students is they're, they're honest. And you ask them a question, they'll give you their honest opinion. And, and one thing of the questions he was asking was, do you feel safer at school or away from school? And when, majority of the school students said that they feel safer at school, which is kind of a surprising thing, and it's a good thing that our kids feel safe. And, and one of the questions, a follow-up question I asked, you know, what could we do to make our, our school safer? And what, what's always amazing with kids is they're much harder on themselves and, and their peers than teachers and administrators are. So they're saying that they, we just have like, you know, stiffer consequences and, and metal detectors and more cameras and those type of things. But for the most part, the, the middle school students are feeling very safe and, and welcome in the schools, and that's a good thing to hear from our, from our kids, and I always enjoy hearing from our, our middle school kids. And that concludes my report.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, Beth.
I had the opportunity to be at the distribution of coats and winter wear, and it was very special. Deb Bunkold, she registered people as they came in, and there were a lot of people from the district that were there. I really felt it was a very inspiring time to be able to reach out and help these families. We had, I think it was two thousand coats, and we ran out of children's sizes. And so if there's one plea I could have is that we, we need more children's sizes next year. That would be between three, size three, and probably size twelve. And also snow pants. And I would like to see about helping in the process of doing a snow pant drive in some of the local churches and that, because so many came, and I think we only had about ten pairs to start with, and there was a great need. So they'll take them used in gently, or used order, you know, brand-new, whatever. And so if any of you are out there and you hear that, you could even just donate money to Julie Campanelli. She's the one who's organizing it, and it's a great cause. We want to keep our kids warm, safe. We want to keep our kids warm, safe. And if you could have seen the faces on some of these parents and kids, and I helped an autistic child and his mom, and it was, it was really exciting to see him just light up and find what he wanted and just nestle into it. So definitely something I'll keep being a part of, and I appreciate all of you out there that did donate and help.
Anyone else?
I'm sure. I had the opportunity on Friday to attend MSBA's, what they call Coffee and Conversation. It was held over at Richfield in their, in their boardroom. There were only eight people, eight brave souls, because that particular day, the morning, it snowed a little bit, and everybody was skating on the, on the roads, and some, some folks come from a fair distance. So I appreciated the, the eight souls that came. The topic of conversation was community engagement. And it's, it's always interesting to, when you gather different perspectives from the different districts, to hear how they go about engaging their community. What does it look like? What does it sound like? What have they tried? What, what doesn't work of the things they've tried? And, and it's, it's, it's just, it's just a lot of fun to pick everyone's brains, the questions kind of bounce around the room. Have you tried this, and what happened with that? It's about, it's about an hour and 15, an hour and 20 minutes, and then there's always a few that are willing to stay later. So once that conversation starts, which doesn't appear to be very difficult, it flows freely, and it's, it's really very interesting, just to see how people do it, and, and then to reflect on how we do it here in Bloomington, and to understand just what a privilege it is to do it the way that we do it, to understand that, that the model that we have here doesn't fit and, and doesn't work for all 336 school districts. You know, it takes a lot of energy and effort and trust and teamwork. So it's, it's nice to hear, and it's, it's a pleasure to know that we have these opportunities here. The second item that I have on here, I was over at Washburn Elementary for lunch, and I think it was sometime last week. And I was a little early, and so I was talking to some of the students. They were out in front of the, the office, and they were selling smentals, I think is what they call them. It's pencils that smell. So they have all sorts of fun little, little fragrances, and they were taking the top off going, try this, try that, apple, cranberry, peanut butter, chocolate. And I, and I asked the students, I said, how did you get to sell these pencils? Well, we're on, we're on student council. Oh, how do you get on student council? Well, you fill out a form, and you put this down, and you, and you have to show up for meetings. And so they took me through that, and during that conversation, I managed to get myself invited to the student council, which was the following Wednesday. So at the student council, I went there, and I didn't realize it, but I, they had put me on the agenda, and I was peppered with questions by fourth and fifth grade students. There was probably 25 of them. And it was, it was really interesting to hear these fourth or fifth grade students ask their questions. One of the questions was, how do we get things changed? Essentially, that's what it was. And, and I said, well, the best place to go from, for elementary is if you have a student council, bring it to your student council. And your student council can talk it over, and then they can formulate a plan, and they'll bring it to your, the teachers that are, that are helping with your student council. And maybe they can bring it to your principal. And then I shared a story of, I think it was four or five years ago, I had stopped into one of the elementary schools, and a student had done just that. This student had, had taken upon himself to go do a survey of his classmates, and the survey that he took was, he didn't like the toilet paper. It was too scratchy, and, and he had four different columns, and he asked all of his, his classmates to check, make a check in the column. And I think that, that hit a nerve, and so I said, it's okay to write a letter, send it to your teacher, et cetera, et cetera. And I thought that, that I had done a fair, a decent job explaining myself. And the very next day, this letter showed up in my email. And I'd like to read it, if I may, so I'll do the best I can to read it. It says, Dear Director, I would really love to have chicken and gravy sometime, but the lunch ladies say that you changed it. But some say the children changed it. Whoever is reading this note, please know that some kids really want chicken and gravy. And it was from a fourth grade student at Washburn Elementary. So I hope they're watching. I hope they replay this. I hope they understand that we do actually listen. Now, the school board isn't going to go and put chicken and gravy in your, in your lunchroom, but that doesn't mean that you can't share what you, what you, what you think you want. And this is the kind of stuff that I know that the, the food service people are really, really interested in. Maybe they didn't realize that you were interested in chicken and gravy, and maybe they can come within our, our guidelines. They can put something together that, that comes close to chicken and gravy, and maybe they try that for one time a month or something. Maybe it'll be Special Chicken and Gravy Day. I don't know. But I really appreciate the fact that, that they shared this, that they weren't afraid to do it, and the very next day, this email showed up in my inbox. And it looks as though a copy was sent to all my coworkers. So it was a lot of fun, and, and that's, those are the invitations that I'm looking for. So if you're watching this, if you want to invite me to a student council, just give me a few days, and I'll put it on my calendar. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I could go.
Okay.
Okay. So first of all, I also attended the Board Student Advisory Committee for both, first the high school, and then, was that last night? Yeah, the middle school. Yes, just last night. Very interesting to hear from all students, different perspectives, from different grades, levels, needs, wishes, so very valuable. Then I also attended the Old Grove Middle School School Conferences, where everything seemed to go really smoothly, and it just, it was good in general. Even Radar the Dog was good, well behaved. And then I attended the Association Metropolitan School District's Board of Directors Meeting. There were a few guest speakers, so if you're interested in finding out more information, you can always go to the AMSD website, or contact AMSD directly. If you're also interested, you can ask for the presentations, and I can share those with you. So the guest speakers, one was Lucy Payne, who is a member of the Professional Educator and Licensing Standards Board. So she, she along with Alex Liuzy, who is the executive director, gave an update on the, on the licensing requirements, the new ones. Also, another couple of guest speakers came from, I don't remember exactly where they came from, but they talked about the implications of the Janus decision and the Unrequested Leave of Absence law changes. And then finally, they presented the Friend of Public Education Award to two senators, one Senator Julie Rosen from District 23, and the other one was Senator Sandy Pappas from District 65. Okay, let me see. Just have a couple of things to share with you regarding AMSD. There is a conference, there's going to be the 2018 Annual Conference, if you are interested in attending this conference. It's on November 28, and it's called Ensuring Equity Access and Opportunity for All Students. This is going to be from 7:30 in the morning to 1:00 PM, and if you're interested in attending, please let Deb Bonkold know, so that she can get tickets for you, because you have to buy the tickets in advance. I'm not done yet. Let me go back to my document here. So as you know, after the election day, we learned that six different AMSD-member school districts were successful in passing their referendums. So congratulate those different districts for their success. The November Budget and Economic Forecast is going to be released on December 5, and the governor will be, the new governor will be providing his budget recommendations by February 19. So this also means that right now, AMSD, both MSD and MSBA are starting to work in their legislative platform, which also indicates that it's time for our Legislative Committee to start getting ready for our own board platform, legislative platform. So this coming Saturday, we will be attending, that will be Director Bernstrom, and Director Baralota, and myself will be attending the pre-delegate meeting, where we will get to know more about the resolutions that MSBA will be bringing forward for approval. Then we're going to be meeting again on December, no, that's November 30, and December 1 for the, for the final meeting.
Yeah, the delegate assembly.
The delegate assembly, that's what it's called. Yes. So I think right after that, you know, it's time for us to meet as a legislative committee, and then we can start working on the proposal that will be bringing to the board for approval. I think that's all I have. Oh, I have one more thing, one more invitation for you. One second, please. There it is. So this invitation is during the MSBA Leadership Conference that we have in January. So that time is coming again. So if you're planning on attending this conference, you're also invited to attend an event that will be hosted by the Minnesota African Heritage School Board members and the Minnesota Latino Heritage School Board members. This will be called, we're going to have two different programs, and this is going to be called Bolstering Good Governance Through Diversity. So I'll be a speaker at one of them, the one that will take place on Wednesday, and then there will be other board members who will be part of the roundtable discussion on Friday morning. So for your awareness, this should be very interesting, if you're interested in participating or attending. And I think that's, I believe that's all I have for you right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I had a chance to attend a rally at Poplar Bridge. I think what was very interesting about this one is it had a lot of student-led parts to it, so it was really nice to see our elementary students already stepping into leadership roles and, and taking part in the rally. I also attended some flag raisings across the district, and it's nice that all of our schools do it, but I noticed that it was also nice that the schools could customize it to their school. So like, at the high school I went to, they said the pledge, but at the elementary I went to, they sang a patriotic song. So I thought it was nice to see difference in, in all the students participating. I also attended the PTA meeting at Kennedy, and after the PTA meeting, I went to the Diary of Anne Frank. For anybody that didn't get to go to it, oh my gosh, our students once again are just superstars with the things that they're involved in, so it was really wonderful. And then we had the PTSA Council Met, and the topic at that meeting was counseling and intervention, understanding the role of school counselors, social workers, and psychologists. And boy, the, there was a lot of questions, and it was really, I thought it was a really great meeting, and I was glad that district staff was there to present that, because it seemed like it was very beneficial to the parents. So, thank you. That's it.
Superintendent.
Thank you. I have three topics. First, on behalf of the school community, thank you to all the veterans and their families for their service to our country. And a sincere thank you for the men and women and their families who are in active service. The school board will be recognizing veterans and active service members at the November 26 school board meeting. Second topic is that, upon invitation by the city manager, I've been meeting with city administration to have conversations about the community center and community and athletic facility needs. I'll be briefing the board and writing on the outcomes of those conversations. Finally, this week, the Sustainability Commission members came to see me. The Sustainability Commission is new. Their work is to advise the city on the management use of environmental resources. What's interesting is one of the members is a student, Jefferson High School senior, Claire Carlson, and she's doing such a good job, they're considering adding another student to be a member of the commission. So I'll be talking to the board chair about possibly scheduling time for the commission to give a presentation to the school board.
Yeah, right.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other business to come before the board? No? Meeting is adjourned.